Okay. Good evening. It's 6:30 PM on Monday, August the 26th, 2019, and an now called Wynton Woods City School Board of Education meeting to order. Please turn your cellphones to silence and rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ruggles?
Here.
Mr. Birdy?
Here.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Here.
Mrs. Coon?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Present. Just a reminder, all the work that we do does follow the SMART goals, which are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-sensitive, that have been established within the district, which include the student achievement, resource alignment, and community engagement goals. Our first item on the agenda this evening is our district honors, recognitions, gifts, and introductions. I would like to invite Dr. John Kupuletti to take his place at the podium, and Mr. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, it's David Lumpkin here. Okay, great. Before I present this Community Spirit Award, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Charlie Frederick for being a catalyst in the community, not just in the field of sports, but also in the field of education. He did something very, very tumultuous by hiring or recommending David to be the athletic director or even be part of Wynton Woods City Schools. That was a big challenge, but David turned out okay. So I'm sure that not only did our great friend, Mr. Charlie Frederick, recommend David, he probably said some prayers for him along the way. So without further ado, I'd like to present this award to Mr. Frederick for his many, many years. If you look on the home side of the stadium, you see the stadium's named after Mr. Frederick for all of his accomplishments and his work. And so I'd like for Mr. Lumpkin, one of his products, one of his projects, to come up and give some encouraging words about what Charlie Frederick meant to the Wynton Woods community.
Good evening. Good evening. Charlie Frederick was really special to me, and I am a product of him fighting for me to be here. He brought me here to Wynton Woods, and my experiences over the last 25, 26 years have been very, very good. It was one of the best moves, or the best move, in my life to come here. And how that happened, I was a young coach at Taft High School, who he had been watching. And we were playing Wynton Woods one night, and he comes up behind me and he says, "Dave, Bill Ignatz is retiring at the end of the season." He said, "How would you like to come here and be a warrior?" And at that time, you know, I thought, "I'm definitely interested. I'm definitely interested." And so I went back in the locker room and threatened my kids and said, "We better play well, or we're running when we get back." And we ended up winning the game. And that spring, he called me and told me the job was open, and he brought me here. A tremendous leader. He set the example. He's a Hall of Famer. The AD that followed him, Westerkamp, who learned from him, is a Hall of Famer. These are all Hall of Famer athletic directors. Behind him was Herb Weasty. Herb Weasty is being inducted into the Athletic Directors Hall of Fame in October. There's an AD before me, so I don't feel the pressure yet, because he hadn't got in yet. But he led the way, and he led by examples. And note, the example that I have today of going to the gym and having to set up for volleyball and find out that the bleachers don't work, and you can't let the bleachers out. And so you have to adapt, you have to overcome, you have to get the job done, you have to get on the phone, you have to call people, no matter what the time is. I remember his toughness, because I was in the gym and I was teaching gym, and I was unaware that he had played football for Notre Dame. He was a linebacker for Notre Dame. And so Westy and Dan Bimani at that time, they said, "Yeah, his helmet's in his file cabinet." I said, "The gold don?" I said, "It's..." I ran up there, I said, "Look, I gotta look at it." "Charlie, you got your helmet?" "Yes, it's down there." Well, when I opened the drawer, it was a leather helmet. And anybody who wore a leather helmet and played football in those days, you were nothing but tough. And so he was tough. He lifted me up when I was down, and I never forgot that, you know, and continued to talk with him, no matter what event we were having. If he was invited, he would call. If he could make it, he would make it. If he couldn't make it, he'd say, "Dave, I can't make it." And then, you know, we talked about his grandsons a lot. His grandsons played over Cove Calf and his grandchildren. But for me, it is a special moment, because I would not be standing here giving you this tonight without him being the leader that he is in bringing me here to Wynton Woods. And I thank the family, and I thank you for sacrificing him to be away from home and to be away from the family, because that takes a tremendous, tremendous sacrifice to do that. Thank you.
So tell a little bit about the first game, first home game?
The first home game is September 13th, and we will be playing Upper Arlington. It's our first home game. It is also our open house night and our tailgate, so it will be crowded. We are going to honor Charlie Frederick at the first game with the family. The game time is 7 o'clock. And of course, most people will be here between 5, 4:30, 5 o'clock for the tailgate. We are going to host the family in the end zone, okay? And we will, you know, grill for the family. I ask for the administration and board members to please stop by, and hopefully we see the grandchildren. He has many, many grandchildren, okay? And I look forward to that night.
I had the pleasure of seeing some of his incredible grandchildren, kind of big kids. And if we're struggling against Upper Arlington, do you think we could kind of suit them up? At least just to honor their granddad just one time?
If we needed a three-pointer, I wouldn't hesitate. I wouldn't hesitate. They are tremendous athletes. They're all in the Hall of Fame.
Fantastic.
They're all in the Hall of Fame, including, you know, the daughter. And Joe's jersey hangs up above the gym, and his sister's jersey hangs up above the gym.
Bravo. Amazing. Amazing. So we'd like for you guys to come up and say a few words. We would appreciate it.
I'm his youngest son, Joe Frederick, so we can't thank you guys enough. I mean, this meant so much to Dad, the school, the district. Mom and Dad moved to Cincinnati in 1968, when I was born. And Dad got the football job at Green Hills High School, and then became the athletic director, and then he got to do both schools. So he always had a kind of a quirky line. We used to tease him a lot, because we wanted to see our Dad, we had to come to school. None of us were very academia, so we were more into athletics. And it was kind of very kind when they named the football stadium after him, because I don't think anyone spent more time at this stadium than Dad did. So I know Dad was always very proud of Coach Lumpkin. It was, that's one of his guys, for sure. So I know for me, my brother Mike, my brother Chuck, my sister Maureen, Mom, we just can't be more grateful how kind you guys have been to my dad. So thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the family and Joe's comments, I just share a funny story or two about my dad. When it came to being an AD, how much he loved this job. I have a great story, but when we were growing up, I remember my dad, we had a Pinto, Ford Pinto little car, and I remember my dad one day putting a chain link fence on the back of that car. I said, "What are you doing, Dad?" He said, "We're gonna go drag the baseball fields." So we would drive that car off the road to drag baseball fields. So it really spoke to the passion he had for his job, and he loved the job, and we're just thrilled to be here, and thank you for recognizing. Thanks.
Absolutely. Mom, you're good? You're okay?
I'm good.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you. It was fun.
Last year, the family also, at the time that Charlie had passed away, asked that a scholarship fund be started here at Wynton Woods High School. And so we have been receiving donations for that. Met with the family, they're gonna give out $1,000 a year. We are currently giving out two $500 scholarships through the athletic boosters in Charlie's name. So it's gonna be $2,000 a year going to students for scholarships.
Fantastic. Awesome. Thank you, David. So finally, a few words from Dr. Kupuletti, who has the award.
I'd like to thank you for coming to grace us with your presence. I'd like to thank you for the scholarships, and it means a lot to our young people. Gives them something to strive for and an accomplishment that they can hold in their hand. I didn't know your husband, your father, but from what I've heard, and that he was somebody who everyone respected. I'm just very happy to be able to give you this award, so whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you, David.
She would like to take a picture of you now, and I think I get to get in the picture now? Yes, okay.
I'll get right here.
I'll get right here. Would you like to come in?
Yeah.
All these nice suits.
Thank you.
That's a nice suit, too.
Thank you again, guys. Very much.
On behalf of the family, I'd like to say thank you. It was all fun. We felt that this was kind of our private playground sometimes. I mean, we would be sitting at home, maybe 10 o'clock on Friday night, and if there wasn't a game going on, we'd say, "Let's go up to Forest Park and play tennis." So we would gather the troops, come up to the courts, and we would play tennis. And the children are a product of the schools and the athletic department, and we attended as many games as we could. They would get to clean up the stadium after the games, and they got to keep any loose change that had fallen through. We found later that Charlie sometime planted some change, so they would keep coming. So we had an extremely good experience with the school district. Thank you.
Wow. Mrs. Frederick, you've inspired me in so many different ways, but I know how to keep my executive team together, so I'm gonna put some loose chains around at the next meeting and see if they all attend on time. So thank you.
It works.
All right. Our next gift is to the Marge and Charles Schott Foundation. They've awarded $10,000 grant to Wynton Hills, Wynton Woods, excuse me, High School for the varsity ensemble trip to Carnegie Hall. So we're very, very excited about that. They didn't, they couldn't make it tonight. We've sent them letters before, but this time, they actually sent a voicemail back saying that they had received the information at the final hour, but in the future, hint, hint, in the future, they would like to come and be well-represented, which means that we will probably be able to call them for future endeavors. You have to catch the hint about this. All right. The next award goes to the Northwood, Northwood Grumman Corporation for its generous donation of $2,000 in support of STEM academics in grades nine through 12. And Ms. Hobbs, would you like to say a little bit about the reality goggles?
Sure. Last year was the first year that we brought additional products to the classroom, and they're VR glasses to give our kids some virtual experiences. So in other words, kids can travel to Africa, they can swim with the sharks, they can go on these field trips that they may otherwise not be able to go on. Virtual reality goggles allow us to do things like that.
Thank you very much. And Madam President and Board, that's it for honors, recognitions, and gifts.
Thank you, Dr. Kupuletti, and thank you, Mr. Smith, and congratulations again to the Fredericks family for, you know, allowing Coach Fredericks to be here on Wynton Woods, Forest Park, Green Hills, you know, property, taking care of so many of our children along the way, and all of our community partners for their dedication and sacrifice to serving. We can't do what we do without partners and people like Mr. Fredericks and the others that spend so much time and dedication to our district, and we really, truly appreciate it. So thank you for your service to our district. We'll now take a two, three-minute recess, so that people who want to leave can leave. We now resume our regular board meeting, and the next item on the agenda is public comments. And since we do not have any public comments, we'll move on to 5.01. The Wynton Woods Teachers Association Representative, Mrs. Baker, is here. Please, Mrs. Baker, you have the podium.
Wynton Woods Teachers Association has decided to do some public shout-outs for our teachers, because we feel as if they deserve some recognition for some of the great things that they are doing. Not that we aren't appreciated, but...
Yes, ma'am.
So tonight, WWTA would like to thank all of the professional educators who gave their time this summer to attend or to present at the New Tech Conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. The next item on our agenda is 5.0T, the Ohio Association of Public School Employees. Oopsie, and I do not see a representative here tonight, so we'll just move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 6.01, the approval of the minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to these minutes, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is 7.01, the Treasurer's Report for Financial Statements for July 2019. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, with one month into the year, we had month-to-date revenues for the month of July of $10.8 million, and that was mostly real estate taxes. We also received $1.6 million from the State Department. Our expenditures for the month were $3.8 million, and during the month of July, we committed $6 million to contracts. Of all the funds, we had approximately $88 million balance, of which $20 million was the general fund, 8.7 in the building fund, and 47 million in classroom facilities. That would be a summary, unless you would have any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Seymour? Okay, with no objections being heard, the financial statements for the month of July be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, the Treasurer's Recommendation for Investments for July 2019.
Yes, during the month of July, the district received $200,289 in interest. $76,500 went to the general fund, and $123,800 to the building fund. That would be it for the investments for the month of July.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order to approve the investment report as presented?
I move to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.02, the Resolution for Permanent Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2020. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
If you'll bear with me for about 10 minutes, I'll briefly review the recommendation for the appropriations for the coming year and the recommendation for the forecast. There we go. Very good. Okay, for the year coming up, 2020 appropriations, this will be this year's district's operating budget. For all, the board will be adopting all appropriations in the amount of close to $70 million. The largest of those being the general fund, which is the fund where the board has the most discretionary powers, and that would be around $56.3 million. We have capital outlay funds of $4 million. We have debt service now of $2.9 million, and special revenue funds of $4.16 million. The capital outlay funds are your building. You'll see there's not much appropriated for the buildings, because last year is when we committed, and you remember, you approved the major project, and all the funds were committed. Approximately $45 million were encumbered last year. So that's why it looks like you have less appropriations this year, is because those POs, those encumbrances and contracts will carry over now. There's not many funds left to commit. But our special revenue funds, the major ones, are athletic and band at 220, auxiliary services, which is John Paul. John Paul gets state funds, which the Wynton Woods District administers the spending of those funds. We have IDEA, Special Education, $920,000. Title III, Limited English Proficiency, $155,000. Title I is $1.2 million. Some new grants, school quality improvement of $400,000, striving readers of about $400,000, and then teacher quality, which is around $235,000. These are all state grants that are specific as to how they can be expended, and the Teaching and Learning Department works very hard in compliance and properly spending these funds. Other funds, we have permanent improvement of $953,000. Of course, the building funds, which I reviewed at $3 million, and of course, food service is a major local fund of $2.4 million. And the general fund, which is where we concentrate the most and where you go to your voters, total estimated receipts for the coming year are $50.3 million. As you can see, we get approximately 50% from local taxes, 40% from the state, and 10% from other sources, such as investments, other state income, and other local income. One thing to always keep in mind is the total district valuation when working on your estimated revenues, and you can see at our peak in 2008, our total value was $546 billion, and now it's, it reached its low point in '16, and it started to grow again after the recession. We're now at 460, which means each mill brings in $460,000. So for real estate taxes, our total district value was approximately $460 million. You currently have voted millage of 94.76 mills, but the effective rate on that after the rollback is approximately 59.73. General fund is 51 of that, permanent improvement is now 1.78, and your bond retirement is now 6.71. If you recall, when we first passed the bond, it was 695. So that shows you that the values have grown, the district value has grown slightly to reduce that millage. When you first approved permanent improvement, it was two mills, so the valuation has helped reduce that millage to the residents. So total real estate taxes that are estimated to be generated is $25 million, of which $2.8 million will be in homestead and rollback exemptions, and that comes directly from the state. Our state funding will be $20,785,000. Through the state funding formula, if you can call it a formula, as you know, right now, the new governor has put us on a fixed income from now until he decides what they're going to do. Transportation of $195,000 for special ed, preschool $160,000, and we have a new fund that Mr. Smith and I are just beginning to learn about, called Student Wellness and Success, and we're estimating $750,000 this year. And the, as you know, okay, go ahead. As you know, we were back, we were on the guarantee, we were on what was called a cap, where we were growing at 3.5% a year. That was taken away, and now it's reallocated through Student Success. Other local receipts, we get revenue in lieu of taxes. Most of that are TIFs, Tax Intermental Financing Programs, through Wynton, through Forest Park, Green Hills, and Springfield Township. We do have open enrollment, we're estimating $1.3 million. We are going to receive approximately $895,000 in tuition from students of other districts, rentals of facilities, and then other for around $377,000. Other state grant receipts are $17,000 for career and technology, Medicaid reimbursement, $325,000, catastrophic aid, $100,000. Medicaid reimbursement and catastrophic aid both relate to special education and people on support, state support. The E-rate is estimated $110,000. We got a lot of E-rate this past year, and I believe I've estimated that correctly if Rhonda's here for the coming year. And then, of course, casino proceeds of $190,000. So if they tell you that casinos are funding schools, you can correct them.
Is that 1%?
And how are we spending the money? I think Wynton Woods should be proud to say that they spend 75% directly on instruction. Operations includes transportation, maintenance, administration, but the $41 million is what is actually going and being spent within the classroom, nothing outside of the classroom. And of course, extracurricular also supports the children. So more than 76% directly to the children. And of course, we're a service industry, so you would expect salaries and benefits to be on the top at around $41 million. Purchased services are the district's contracts at $12 million. Supplies and materials for instructional, all supplies and materials, and then equipment is way down. Mr. Smith has reduced equipment purchases for the coming year. And then, of course, other, $737,000, and most of that is real estate assessment taxes for collection of our real estate taxes that we pay the Hamilton County Auditor. So total expenditures, as you can see, have bottomed out in '13, and then they started escalating again. And if you will notice, the purchase services and supplies is where it's grown the most, and that's your contracted services, heating, lighting, our custodial, and all of our contracts. Also, teaching and learning is taking a new direction. We're not buying as many textbooks, and a lot of it is online, so a lot of your instructional is switching from a supply, something you use, into something on the system computer and becomes a contract with a... and becomes a contract with a supplier. They can probably answer that question better than I, but it's electronic classrooms and textbooks. I've included all the negotiated salary increases. We have healthcare projected at five percent and dental at five percent. And as you know, our benefits are a major portion of our expenditures. Our major increases were tuition of six hundred thousand and utilities, a hundred and twenty. Superintendent Smith's budget reductions of six hundred and fifty, which were aided by the increases of tuition and utilities. So the general fund had a beginning balance of seventeen, will receive fifty. We're budgeting fifty-six, and we will end the year with twelve. Then we have what's called the five-year forecast, which takes the current year and then projects into the future. For the five years, it's filed with ODE and they monitor the district's spending plan. What we have included in the forecast for the board, all revenues are held constant except for the following. We lost potential funding, as I shared with you before, of two point one million by the change in the state's funding formula. Winton Woods will never receive the full funding due, that was due to us for the three percent cap growth. The new source of funding is for Student Wellness and Success with estimated seven hundred and fifty for nineteen twenty and nine hundred and fifteen for nine, for twenty twenty-one. But I want to share that I do, there's a fair share funding plan that's being proposed by representatives of Cup and Patterson, Democrat, Republican, working together to try and come up with a new Ohio Fair Funding Plan. We've been monitoring it and watching it. They have asked to study it further before they implement it. But I believe Mr. Smith and I would agree that this is going to probably help Winton Woods down the road because monies will follow the children who need it, and it'll be based on property values, income, and social economical conditions. So our projected state revenue for 2020 will be twenty million seven. And then for 2021 through 2025, based on what I know today, twenty million nine hundred and fifty. And the projected revenue includes a six point nine five mil levy beginning in January first of 2021, which the board will pass formally in October to proceed and in November to submit to the county auditor. I've included all the negotiated agreements, no salary increases beyond 2021, and step increases for all years, twenty through twenty-four. Your step increases or increments are approximately two and a half percent per year. Healthcare at five percent, and I would like to share that the employees during negotiations made plan design changes, which reduced our overall cost of coverage by five point five percent. And that, that represented almost three hundred thousand dollars in savings annually, and our dental insurance at five percent. Other assumptions for 2021, we will have savings of at least one and a half million from our FY twenty budget. So as you can see here, in 2021, we eat into our cash balance less because I'm projecting the savings to carry from our budget into 2021. And by FY twenty-four, we're definitely operating in the red. This is the five-year forecast numerically. The thing to watch is on the bottom, twelve million, nine million, six million, two and a half, and then short, three point two million for 2024. So even though we are projecting a levy, we'll have to monitor how the state begins to fund us and monitor our cash balance and our projected growth. So total funds available versus expenditures, if you can look at the expenditure line in blue, it goes down slightly for FY twenty-one because FY twenty, I've incorporated the entire budget. And, and the red line is funds without a, total funds available without the levy, and the green line is total funds available with the levy. And you can see that without the levy, we would go run short in 2022. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order to approve the resolution, and then we could entertain questions.
The first one would be to approve the appropriations.
Approve the appropriations, yes.
For 2020.
I move to approve the permanent appropriations for the fiscal year 2020 as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Now, are there any questions that you might have for Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Seymour, could you just elaborate for listeners what's included in debt services?
Sure, that would strictly be our principal and interest obligations annually on the funding of the debt for the new buildings. That's approximately two point nine million a year in principal and interest.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is eight point oh three, which is the five-year forecast for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. Mr. Seymour?
Yes, I would recommend that you approve the five-year forecast as presented.
Okay.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the five-year forecast for fiscal years 2020 through 2024 as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for Mr. Seymour on what he presented earlier?
I have more of a comment. I appreciate you going through and, and kind of breaking it down, obviously, for the board and for the public to see. I know it's without solid information from the state and with it constantly changing, you kind of have to consult the magic crystal ball. So I appreciate you giving us a concise of a projected viewpoint as you possibly can. Hopefully, the state will, will help with some of those future possible deficits and look for some guidance from the state. But again, I appreciate you being able to give us a good candid view of what was going on.
Well, as you know, we discussed that six point nine five mills may not be sufficient to run the program as. But we got to hope that on a fifty-fifty funding scenario, the state eventually develops a new program. I mean, for the state to not have a funding formula is, and just say, we'll give you what you got the year before. Districts that are growing, districts that are increasing ADM, that have to add teachers. We were always funded on ADM and, well, average daily membership, yeah. So for that to just go away for those districts who weren't on a growth is kind of difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, are there any other questions for Mr. Seymour? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour, for your very thorough explanation of the finances. The next item on our agenda is nine point oh one, which is, which are the reports of the superintendent. And the first one is the school reports. Mr. Smith, you do have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, it, it feels like the staff has been in session for maybe ten weeks because these reports are pretty elaborate. So there's a litany of activities that are occurring in the district. Of course, parents need to know that September second is the holiday Labor Day. And I know they're saying, well, the kid just come, came back to school, but they do get a break in between. And then there's the superintendent state of the schools, six to seven o'clock PM. When you see Principal Jones and Principal Wallace, give them a big high five or kudos or hug or something because they worked it out together where they would not have their open houses conflict with each other. And people might think that you could have primary north and south open house at the same time, but some parents have children in both schools. So the September fourth, six to seven thirty is primary north. And then the open house, September tenth, is primary, excuse me, primary south is September fourth, primary north is September tenth. And Mr. Jones has us broken down through kindergarten through first grade. You can read along and I'm sure parents will know where their children fit. The elementary school, I'm inviting the board and all members of the executive team to come to the elementary school reading guarantee. It's information night for parents, but you need to hear what information we're giving parents about the third grade guarantee because that's the make it, break it year for a lot of our children transitioning on to fourth grade. It's a very, very difficult, rigorous assessment, but we need to know how to support children. And so the administrators, Mr. Holman and Mrs. Plummer, will give an overview, and that's six to seven on September seventeenth. If, it really would tell a lot to the children based on how many people attend it, and it tells parents a lot about what we believe in. Believe it or not, September twelfth is midterm. Parents have said in a very, very positive way, thank you for putting the midterm on the calendar. It gives us an idea of what we expect and how our children are progressing. And then the high school is on to its very, 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 very aggressive schedule. The first senior check, credit check, and parent meeting will be September twelfth. I think Mr. Martin and his team did an incredible, incredible job. And as you noticed, Dr. Johnson and also Mrs. Rugless, as sit on the student achievement committee, not one parent came complaining about their children not making the graduation requirements because of the constant communication that was, was available. September thirteenth, that will be the open house football game and tailgate. And that's when we're going to honor the Fredericks family that was here receiving the community spirit award tonight. And then there will be the interim report card distribution on September twentieth. Sept twenty, September twentieth as well is the homecoming football game against Molar. And then the September twenty-first will be an incredible homecoming dance. I believe Mr. Denny is featured to be one of the dancers at homecoming this year. So thank you, Mr. Denny, for, you know, making sure that you could be a, be part of that great, great opportunity. So those are some of the major reports, and I would encourage families to look at your calendar very, very carefully. Read the literature, check Chromebooks, look and echo for all the activities that are happening because we're full speed ahead week two. All right? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is nine point oh two, which is the local report card update, and Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, with the, with the board's approval, I would like to do nine point zero two and nine point zero three collectively together. The report card, of course, is not here at this particular time. And Dr. Raglin and Mrs. Martin are waiting for some preliminary information to give you the new tech update, which would be nine point zero three. There's, there will be no reports for those two.
Okay, so nine point oh three, we won't, we're going to table that one as well, the new tech update. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is nine point oh four?
Nine point zero four, and Dr. Raglin will be prepared to give the summer school report.
Okay, summer school report. All right, thank you. Dr. Raglin and Mrs. Rozell. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mrs., Mrs. Rozell.
Good evening. So we are here to present on summer school and our programs that ran over the summer. And so if you would advance the slide, please. So we had end-of-course exams at the high school for grades nine through twelve. These were for students who needed to re-attempt any one or several end-of-course exams. We had nineteen students. They took a total of thirty-five tests. Those scores don't return, however, until September the fourth, so we have no way of knowing how well they did. We had an Algebra I for repeat credit. We had thirty-four students out of forty-three who completed their course for a course completion rate of seventy-nine percent. Our virtual credit recovery at the high school, we had thirty-six students and they recovered thirty-six credits. There were several students who opted for more than one class, and so whether they earned half a credit or a whole credit or some combination.
All right, for our middle school data, of course, recovery for middle school grade seven, you had twenty-three students out of twenty-six to pass for a rate of eighty-five percent. And with our eighth graders that were seeking promotion to the next grade, there were twelve students and seventy-five percent of those students were promoted to the next grade. Go back.
So moving along to the next slide for elementary programs. So we had thirty-four students.
Can you hold for a minute? Can you go back two, two slides? No, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, so we have twelve students that are in credit recovery for middle school, correct?
Yes.
Eight of them transitioned on and they're in the high school right now.
Yes.
So what happens to the other few? Will they be able to transition before the year is over? Or is that a possibility depending on how, how deficient they are?
It depends. That's why we allow them. It's seat time. We want to make sure that they get.
Thank you.
Get what they need, so they're not going to be held there. They'll, they'll make it on to the next.
Okay, all right, that's very important.
And we did, it's not noted in our paperwork. We did something a little different this year. Mr. Martin asked that some students, he went through and reviewed report cards, and he had asked that some students that looked like they may have struggled toward the end come to summer school anyway, and those young people did attend. We did not include them in the data. But we had a few that did attend and were very successful, and also I don't see the math.
The intro to algebra class? So we had twenty-four students who completed that, although that class was not for credit. So they were gaining enrichment to help prepare, better prepare them for Algebra I. So we were being proactive in that way.
Thank you.
With elementary programs, we had thirty-four students who tested. There's two tests. MAP, Measures of Academic Success. Of those, there were seven students who passed the MAP test. And there's an asterisk there because there were four students who passed both the reading full-scale score and the reading subscore. And then we have for the state assessment, there's two different scores. So there's a full-scale score, there's also a reading subscore. And of the thirty-four students who passed the state test, there were six who also met other requirements. So we're either talking, they either passed a combination of both MAP and the state test or they had the reading score and the reading subscore. So in other words, we have three measures, two tests, but three measures by which a student can ultimately pass and be progressed to the fourth grade.
Okay, Dr. Raglin?
Yes.
Twenty-seven students, what, what happens to them now?
So those students would be in the three-four split class at the elementary school.
So it's a three-four combo?
Yes.
All right, and do they have to wait to the end of the year to move? Or is there a timetable? Is there another opportunity for them to transition with their peers?
So they would have to take another test, which happens again this fall in October. We've already made arrangements for that assessment, and when those results come back, should they pass, then yes, they could move mid-year.
Okay, so Mr. Seymour spoke briefly about the social and emotional funding that we're going to receive to kind of. that we're gonna receive to kinda help kids through some of the tumultuous stuff that they deal with. That could be pretty overwhelming. What, what do we have in place for the young people that didn't transition with their peers?
So they will receive special care from their teachers, administrators. We'll look to see what those funds would entail for providing special services within the, within the school itself.
Okay.
With the next slide and our ESL summer program. So these are the grade levels that were represented. We do have three grade levels not represented, six, seven and eight. We did not have students from those three. We did have kindergarten through fifth as well as nine through twelve. Our students that represented here are about roughly half of what we had the previous summer. We did have a decrease in enrollment for ESL. Not that there wasn't a need, but we do have students who have other obligations over the summertime that conflict as ESL is not a graded program, but rather an enrichment program. And oftentimes, they have family obligations that may prevent them from, from enrolling. So we saw a decrease this summer.
Could we assume that some of those family obligations are going back to their?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot of them were going back to their country of origin.
Okay.
So recommendations, a lot of these recommendations, we're, we're gonna continue. Having an early communication blitz starting in March and continuing through April and May. Providing more enrichment and tutoring opportunities. We did have a summer science program that we kinda ramped up this year. And had a fifth grade focus. And that opportunity also used our National Geographic Science Program to help prepare them for fifth grade. And so it was more hands-on and doing experiments. We do have two days for the Ohio State reading testing. So MAP is one day. The state testing encompasses two days because there's two parts. And it just made it easier for parents and students to, and teachers to be able to complete both parts of that test within those two days. We have distributed leadership, so each site is, is responsible. So elementary, middle are housed at the intermediate school. And the high school is responsible for the programs that it houses. And so we want to continue with that distributed leadership.
We wanted to continue to utilize our contracted services from Talbot House for those students in need. That was a major, major help over the summer. Those students are having issues. That's why they're there. And to see the familiar faces from Talbot House, it really, really helps. If we have issues with transportation, just small things that make a really, really big difference. So that support is necessary in the summer. Continue having the school nurse on duty. That was essential. You have students that still require distribution of meds. And we do have accidents. They're kids, so it's really nice and it feels safe and comfortable to continue to have a nurse on staff. Continue with security service. Things happen. And to have that additional person, those eyes and another body on site, it also helps with our services. The full service summer meal program was a huge success. This whole nutrition is the mission thing, you, you, you really don't get it until you see it. You really don't. And the kids appreciate it. Parents appreciate it. It's so funny. We laugh sometime because the parents come in with their pajamas on or whatever, but they want the kids to get in and eat and they have to be escorted if they're not in the programs. But they make certain that they get there and that they get the meal. So that is something that we need to continue to endorse moving forward. And we also want to use our technology services and update early for rollout. So we're prepared for any technology needs over the course of our summer programs.
Ms. Rozelle, I'd like to commend you guys for, for, for the work. Because based on the reports from office, I did not see any suspensions or recommendations for expulsions for the entire summer.
We have zero tolerance for discipline and behavior. And we have a conversation with those young people the very first day of summer school. And it's very clear of what our expectations are. So we've not, and our reputations kinda get out there like, hey.
That's kinda scary. That's a scary thing.
It's not scary.
We've worked together for the last three summers, so we have kind of a system. We've got our people, you know, we, we, we've got a group and we all, you know, plan it out. And we kinda know what it is every summer. And so it, it makes the job easy or easier.
You know, none of the teachers are working all year and then trying to support those teachers and encourage them to work in the summer. I, I think the reason we have so many people wanting to be part of it is because of the support that's given to them on the discipline side to make sure that they can really teach the coursework. So thank you again.
You're welcome.
I have, I have a few questions. And I think through your recommendations, I get a sense of, you know, some things that you would like to keep going. But I'm just, you know, interested in understanding, how do you feel? How do you feel from, as you're building this summer program? And I think this is maybe your third, the third time that we've gotten this report. How do you feel from one year to the next as far as implementing? Do you think it's growing, getting better, stronger, or, you know, how can we support you?
It's getting better, but it feels at this point, like Dr. Ragland said, it feels very comfortable. Because we know what it takes. We know what, how long it takes to do certain things. The staff that we have, everybody's extremely supportive and we have expectations of each other. So we know what we need to be doing. We're very, very honest and transparent. So we speak to each other very honestly. If there's an issue, we address the issue. We don't beat around the bush. We get to it so we can make and resolve and move forward. And we have to keep in mind that we don't have a lot of time. And the kids are depending on us. Because this is for some of them, their very last opportunity to get it right. So we're in the mode of getting things handled and moving forward. Wouldn't you agree?
I would agree with that.
And the reason why I ask that question, because you sound in your presentation more confident that you're not working through, you know, the, the, the issues. You like, you have a solid understanding of what's needed. So, yeah, I have two more questions if anybody else, okay. The reduction in the ESL participants, was there, was there a specific grade that you saw an increase? Or was it distributed across all?
There was, there was an increase more so in the primary grades. So first, second grade. There were more students represented there last year at that level.
Okay.
K through four is where we have our greatest number of students.
Okay.
Keep in mind the other part, a lot of those students are working age. So that's gonna be the barrier.
The, the other thing too is that, and one of the things that we try to do with Envision Children to try to partner more with them, to try to have some cross-pollination collaboration in terms of getting the word out. So wherever, you know, we were putting out the word about summer school, we were also trying to be side by side with Envision Children. They had a large increase of students this year in their program. But one of the things that we noticed is that a lot of our Nepali students were absent. And it was because of transportation. And so a lot of them have transportation issues. And so it's a matter of wanting them to get either to our program or to their program. And so one of the things we're looking to rectify next year and working with them possibly is bus transportation. So when our students come to our program, they can stay later for their program. Because oftentimes, we found that the Nepali mothers are at home, but they don't have transportation. So unless we provide transportation, they will not be able to stay. And, and, and so those programs are an additional benefit to our students as well.
Well, kudos to you all because I know that it was an effort to really try and work together with Envision to increase the numbers and get the information out and to see that, that partnership that's in place is also adding additional services to the students in our community.
Right.
Last question. The twenty-four students that were identified for intro to algebra, I think you may have said it, but I might have missed it because I was writing too many of these little notes. How, how are they identified?
The teachers.
The teachers make recommendations?
Make recommendations.
And, and you got twenty-four students to come in the summer for an intro to algebra class that don't, you don't get any credits for?
None whatsoever, but they were prepared. They got formulas. They kept a notebook. It was really impressive. So Dr. Ragland felt that it was necessary to give them a celebration at the end. So they did have a pizza party at the end. But kids want.
They should have had a pizza store.
They had chips. They had pop.
Yeah, I mean, coming with no credit, I mean.
Right, I mean, that's so.
It's really impressive.
Good job, ladies.
Thank you. Any other question?
I think Dr. Kupaladi has a question.
Yes, thank you for your presentation, Dr. Ragland, Ms. Rozelle. I have a lot of questions, but I'll focus it just on one. That's ESL students. Because, you know, language proficiency is essential to everything else that they do. And the fact that they can't be here because of our structure or because of their needs. I'm wondering whether there's any possibility of giving them a portable lesson plan that if they go back home, they can take with them. I would prefer that they could get online, but that may not be possible where they're going. So just to put that in your head as a possibility, I would certainly support any request to the board for resources to do it. Because that is really what I see as a really essential matter for our students.
Well, we, we had a small pilot along those lines, but for older students. And it was in, we had an Algebra One SAT class at the high school. And so one of our high school teachers who teaches that class, she had Chromebooks for her students. And she said that there were eleven of them who successfully completed her online class that she set up. And she met with them virtually periodically throughout the summer. And so she's anxiously awaiting their MAP test because she wants to see what they, they scored in the spring versus what they'll score at the beginning of the year. And that was her sole purpose, was trying to help them resist or not have summer slide because she's looping, meaning she's gonna have those same students back again for her ESL geometry class in the fall.
So that would be my hope, that you'd be able to accommodate those students by some heroic effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question and it's just kinda, I guess, gnawing at me with this whole third grade, third, fourth grade, you got them, you know, separate in a different classroom. Students that kinda move in the middle of the year, how might they impact the classroom that they're moving to? You know, like they've.
Mrs. Martin, can, can you speak to that?
I sure can.
Yeah.
The way it was set up at ESL, we did have a three, four split. And with the three, four split, you had some students in there that were working on third grade outcomes and standards and some working on fourth grade. And the mid-year promotion allowed the students to be promoted as fourth grade. But they, for the most part, remained in the class, but was given and provided fourth grade material and instruction within that class. The setting in the class does, is not one that makes the third grade students feel like they don't have. We had it set up where in that class, it was a welcoming class and invited learning to happen. And then as the students navigated from third grade to that promoted fourth grade, it was just one of those where their test methods are different when we mapped them afterwards. For the, most of the material was pretty much aligned. It wasn't that the ones that didn't make it felt that they were being ostracized or anything like that. It was more so providing them more supports within that classroom. And also using Envisions for some of the in-class instruction as well. But it was more supportive than not.
So I guess my concern or question would be if I had a third grader who was in that split class and they're missing the first half of the year of fourth grade instruction, how do they make up that time? Is there something, there's something that fills that gap? I mean, because the third, you know, I understand what I'm saying. Am I missing?
You've got, you've, you've, you've got a situation where you, you have fourth graders and they've got an intro.
And they've got the whole year and then the other ones, you know.
So the one thing that Mrs. Martin put in place, those students are automatically enrolled in summer, in the summer program.
Okay.
So you, you've moved, because remember, they're gonna go from a third grade experience, a third, fourth experience to possibly a fifth grade experience. So someone has to kinda retool them and give them the basics so that they could be successful. Otherwise, you're gonna do the same thing in the intermediate building. They'll have a struggle. So they are automatically enrolled in a summer school program. Parents are talked to and they're saying, this is not a consequence. This is just to enhance it. All right?
And to piggyback on that, obviously, you just don't start learning in third grade. There's kindergarten, first and second grade. Is there an outreach as far as the communication from the primary grades to assist? So when you get to third grade, it makes it an easier transition?
Yes. And I think through the Striving Readers Grant, we're also looking to enhance our classroom instruction. We are developing RTI plans by building to also additionally support teachers in the classroom as well as students, you know, whether they are on I E Ps or whether we're providing them intervention. And we're constantly progress monitoring our students' progress throughout the year.
Dr. Ragland, can you go back one, one step? You mentioned RTI. The board needs that.
Response to intervention. So we have tiers of intervention, tier one, tier two, tier three. All of our students are impacted by tier one because tier one is where all the classroom instruction happens with their individual teacher. And so any student who is struggling would then possibly move to tier two, you know, looking at data. And there would be a plan in place to help support them. And then our students needing, you know, more, more intervention, more time, individualized. Those students would have an individualized plan as well. Trying to move them and support them with reading and or math.
And do you find it difficult when students move in? Well, I'm sure you do. I already know the answer. But as students move in in the second grade or first grade, to be able to bring up the speed quickly enough to be able to get them ready for third grade? Because we do have to, obviously, we have children that move in and out of the district. And we have a process to be able to identify them fairly quickly to put them.
Yes. Through Ames Web and through MAP, we have, we have things that can identify students when and where they struggle.
So the other thing, Mrs. Martin, Dr. Ragland have another plan that they're, that we're, we're having conversations about now. There has to be an intentional conversation between the second grade teacher, talking to the third grade teacher. What do the kids need to know to get to you and be successful? That's been a missing point. And some of the points are missed because our buildings are very spatial, meaning we have a lot of rotations. We're trying to work on that because we don't wanna have an excuse and, and wait until we get into the new building to say we can solidify it. We, we're trying to do it now with intentional conversations. They've marked out some time during professional development. So each grade band could have very, very definitive conversations. What do the kids need to know in order to be successful in this next transition? So.
So that I'm clear. And just in case this is a long answer, we can save it for SAC. But I wanna make sure that I'm understanding the three, four split. So this is like a fourth grade, but you have some students that are at third grade level that need some additional interventions to get up to the fourth grade level. And then they can be transitioned into what's happening at the fourth grade.
Was that the fourth grade? So what happens is it's the majority of the students in that class, like the twenty-seven, I think, students that she, I, I can't remember the number up there. Those students may be the students that are in that three, four split. So the three, four split may start out, it just depends on each year, where all of the students in that class may be considered the, the three, four students that could potentially be promoted in mid-year. And what happens is sometimes as the year progresses and new students come in and if they're at the fourth grade level, we may have to put those students within that class. So ideally, it starts off as like population of students needing additional supports. But they can also be had probably two or three who parents wanted them to come out once they hit that promotion score. And then a lot of them like for them to stay in there because they get that added level of support. Because even if they make that proficient score or that third grade reading guarantee, that is not necessarily the proficient level. That's just me, though, the guy. That's just me, the required. Yeah, so, having that class padded with supports definitely helps.
So, so, the summer portion, those students have to go through the summer to get some transitional, to go to the, some transitional support to go to the fifth grade?
Some of their foundation, foundational basis.
Okay.
And then, with the Invisions program, um, the after-school program at ESL, those students are also identified to go into that program too. And that's an after-school program, um, and the parents can opt out of it. But it's definitely something that is encouraged for them to, like.
Okay, that makes sense. Very comprehensive and intentional in providing those services to students. Last question. So, the students who, whose parents pulled them out, do they, do they typically do pretty well? Or is there some so- social, emotional support that you have to give those students?
They typically do pretty well. Over the course of the four years that I was there, um, I do believe, like, each year, we didn't have more than three that actually came out and went into a different classroom. But last year, I can re- if I recall, a student, um, she did really well. She, she left this environment and went directly into a total four-grade environment, and she did well.
So, I'd like to see one more step. I know your plate is full, Mrs. Martin, but I'd like to add just a piece of dessert, if that's okay. So, the students that are in fifth grade, that transition from the, from the combo, that are in fifth grade right now, I'd like for us to track them to see how they're progressing, to make sure they're not falling behind. Because they, they barely made it into that fifth grade experience. And I want to know if the support that we're giving them is really paying off. Otherwise, they will be a struggling sixth grader, and then, you know what happens. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mrs. Rozelle, Dr. Ragland, and Mrs. Martin. We kind of pulled you in on that too. But we appreciate the information, it is very informative. And it actually allows our families to maybe better understand what's gonna happen. And it even brings more, uh, light to the program that you have invited all of us to come to for the third grade, you know, to kind of understand what's going on with that. So, we appreciate that presentation and, um, and your thoroughness in doing that. So, we, we appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And again, this is for Information Board, but it's very good content. The next item on the agenda is nine point oh five, which is the open enrollment update. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Uh, Ms. Hobbs.
Or Ms. Hobbs?
You know, Ms. Hobbs, Ms. Hobbs is definitely an overachiever. So, she's gonna give you a little more than an open enrollment update.
All right.
Actually, I'm transitioning this, good evening, Board, to just a regular enrollment update. Open enrollment at this time is not stable across the districts. What the districts have to do is, we have to write each other letters and indicate we have these students. And they have to accept them before they can get updated in the information system. So, it's a work in process for sure, as well as our regular enrollment. That's also a work in process, um, because new enrollments come in daily as well as withdrawals are happening right now. So, our numbers are definitely overinflated that I'll share with you. But I'm so excited to say that this is the first time since two thousand and five that we start with a four. And right now, our number is, um, residents, we have thirty-seven oh three, non-residents, three hundred and forty-six. And that's a total of four oh five three. And of course, it's overstated somewhat right now, but withdrawals have already begun to come out. So, um, I'm kind of excited to see where this ends up.
Yeah, and the goal is nine?
Nine, I don't. I was gonna say, and I did check the OFCC projections that we provided them. Two thousand and five, two thousand and six was the last time that we had four thousand and one students. So, it's been a while.
Four thousand one.
Excellent.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hobbs and Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is nine point oh six. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the IDEA Part B Budget Presentation and Public Input. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, that presentation will be, uh, done by Mrs. Martin and Mrs. Bray. Thank you for your great work, Mr. DeMar. Following Mrs. Seymour, that had to be a chore, sir, that's amazing.
Sorry, I should have asked. Mrs. Martin, Mrs. Bray.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Smith. Um, this evening, we will talk about the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and also the budget presentation for this current school year. And that will be, um, presented by myself, Tanya Bray. I'm Director of Student Services and Adrian Martin, who is Director of Teaching and Learning. So, our agenda, um, tonight would be the overview of the Special Education Report Card, which is a special education profile, um, the fiscal year twenty nineteen budget, the current fiscal year twenty twenty budget, and then also the public participation in comment at the end. So, about one in every five people have a learning disability. Uh, one million children ages six to twenty-one have some form of learning disability and receive special education services in school. And so, this is school age, this does not include preschool. So, IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, is the federal special education law that requires public schools serve the learning needs of students with disabilities. So, IDEA requires that schools provide special education services to eligible students per a student's individualized education plan, which is otherwise known as an IEP. Um, so, this is an annual rating for every public district school in Ohio. So, it says special, like, special education report card, it is our profile. Um, some of the information, um, is currently under review and some of the data is not available at this time, but we will go through those indicators. The Ohio Department of Education uses final data submitted through the Education Management Information System, otherwise known as EMIS. Um, and the data results is one of the four ratings. It either meets requirements, needs assistance, needs intervention, or needs substantial intervention. So, this is, um, our preschool. So, currently indicator six. Um, LRE is the Leash Restrictive Environment and Regular Program. So, we met that requirement. Um, and also, the preschool leash, um, leash restrictive environment separate program, we met that. Um, all of indicator seven at this time is to be determined. It is currently under review. That was for last year and also this current school year. That information has not been released. Um, early childhood transition, Part C to Part B. That, um, is for preschoolers who have not turned age three yet, who needs an IEP by the age of three. Um, this was re- referrals such as Help Me Grow referrals. And, um, an IEP and the whole transition process in terms of an evaluation needs to be, um, conducted by the child's third birthday. There was one IEP or one evaluation that did not meet that requirement, and that was due to a late move-in into the district. However, we're still held accountable. So, for graduation rate, we did not meet that requirement, um, which was consistent with last year. Um, graduation by standard requirements, again, that is to be determined. That is under review, and that information and data has not been released. The dropout rate, um, we met that requirement, as well as secondary transition, indicator thirteen, and also indicator fourteen, um, post-school outcomes, which is to be determined.
So, Mrs. Bray, who is the, who is the true cohort? Who is the cohort? What is the cohort? Which, when does the cohort begin?
For.
For graduation, uh, requirements.
The true cohort, um...
According to that report, the cohort is when they become, when they start school.
Correct.
So, the problem with it, they're saying, okay, with, with a, with a transient population, if the cohort is when they're starting school as a kindergartner, then you are measured based on how many of your kindergartners become seniors. That's, that's rough. That's, that's a big, that's a, that's, in, in places, and I, I think this, this is the other thing. When we went to the, um, council to discuss the conversation about the report card, more fluent districts can stabilize that their students are going to live in that community from kindergarten to twelfth. But if we lose a few kids along the way, it challenges the cohort. And then, it ca- it challenges the outcome because those kids are not going to be with us K to twelve. However, the, uh, addition of open enrollment helps stabilize it some because even though you may not live in that community, you can still attend our school. So, it's helped out that way, but not enough.
I'm a little confused. Can you say that again? So, like, if you have a cohort of kindergartners or that, that come in, and it's a cohort of five hundred students, based on the report card, we are, twelve, twelve years later, we are measured on that five hundred students, whether they're here or not?
Absolutely.
Correct.
So, it's, it's not freshman year, it's...
That cohort starts more early. See, people think the cohort really starts when the kid becomes a ninth grader.
All right.
No, it does not.
I thought that's what we were told at that one legislative meeting.
No, they'll give you that information. It'll, they'll give you that information, Dr. Johnson. But you can see that this report actually is talking about kids across all grade bands.
Oh, yeah, 'cause it's, it's, okay, I think we mixed them two things. We're doing disabilities and then there's the general ninth report card.
Okay. Um, so, for indicator eight, facilitated parent involvement. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay, he had a question, so I'll tell, we'll get it in.
Okay. Um, we did not meet for, um, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. And what that is, our parent surveys that are actually delivered. And ODE gets those parent surveys. Since we did not, um, or ODE did not receive the surveys, we did not meet that requirement.
So, are we distributing the surveys?
No, ODE distributes them. They are mailed to homes, and then they are then mailed from the home of our students from parents, and then that goes to ODE.
So, the parents didn't send it back to ODE, is that what happened?
That, that could have been the possibility of what happened.
Did they know that they were, I mean, did we prepare the parents that they would get a survey or something?
Those surveys were sent to random parents in the district.
So, you can't, yeah. Just saying hypothetically, if you get one, please send it back.
So, our next time up for this indicator again is the year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, is when we'll try that all over again. Um, until then, it will remain the same to not met.
So, they don't really give you the survey? Our parents would probably be more apt to complete it if a survey is coming, even to a random parent sample group every year. But when you do it every three or four years, they're like, what is this?
Well, I, I think that's a little challenging because, you know, yes, I do agree. But, you know, maybe we can say, hey, if your student is identified, you know, with a disability, you may, you know, just communicate, you may get a survey, please return it. However, the downside of that is some, I, I know from, you know, my experience as an educator, sometimes people don't want to put their business out there to a third party or, or whatever. They want to protect the integrity of the information. So, that's interesting. Urban network.
Is, well, here's a question. Is the information so, does it pry or is it in general, like, as you can best dis- survey?
Both. It's a prying general situation. That's what it is.
No, I just wondered, I didn't know what would be putting off to a parent to, to participate.
And I, I think Ms. Ragless makes a great point. People want to know, okay, if this is important, we would probably do better if you did this on a local level with our school, if they asked us to complete a survey. Because the surveys that Mrs. Denny has conducted, parents are conduct, completing those surveys. And we ask some pretty intense questions, and parents are not reluctant be- because they say it's Wittenwood City Schools and not the Ohio Department of Education.
Right, 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 I wouldn't.
I think next go around will be more intentional to see how those surveys can be mailed out and do some follow-ups to see if they were built back to ODE in a timely fashion, where we can meet that indicator.
Let's keep in mind the sensitivity of our ESL parents in filling out surveys and forms. That means something, but it may not mean the same thing for us.
Um, indicator nine, disproportionality of all categories, we met that. Um, indicator ten, disproportionality specific disabilities categories, we did meet that. Um, indicator eleven is child find, um, timely initial evaluations. Again, that's very similar to, um, indicator twelve for preschool. Um, we did not meet that, um, by one ETR. Um, again, that was for, for specific reasons that I must keep confidential, and I can, um, later talk about that.
Ms. Bray, ETR?
ETR is, um, Evaluation Team Review. Which is the data that supports to complete an IEP, the Individualized Educational Plan. Um, timely correction of non-compliance findings, findings. So, all of these not met, so we've had to, um, our team, um, Student Services team has had to complete, um, correction action plans and do follow-ups with the State Support Team thirteen, which is Hamilton County ESC, and then also with the Department of Education. Um, so, with all of these indicators that, um, we did not meet, we had to make correction plans and follow through with those. And so, with indicator fifteen, um, we did meet that indicator, that, um, we went through the whole gamut of doing the, um, corrective action plans through ODE and the follow-throughs with that. Um, also indicator twenty, the timely and accurate data, we did meet that as well. And now, um, Mrs. Martin will talk about the federal IDEA initial allocations.
Thank you, Mrs. Bray. The fiscal year for twenty eighteen, the district received eight hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred and seven dollars and six cents of allocation for federal IDA funds. And for this initial school year for twenty nineteen, we received nine hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-eight cents.
All right, let's see what you have, Mr. DeMar. Very good.
Okay.
Okay, for the IDA allocations from two thousand eight to twenty nineteen, which is this year, um, if you notice, from FY oh eight, that was the largest amount that was received from the initial allocation. One of the years that was closest to that amount was FY eighteen, where there was nine hundred sixty-four thousand three hundred eighty-nine. For FY twenty, we are receiving the nine thousand twenty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-one. So, this just kind of gives you an idea of all the allotments over the course of now, we're at eleven years. For the FY twenty nineteen IDA budget by function, which includes instruction, support services, governance and administration, non-public and indirect costs. Uh, the, the majority of the funds, if you see the, the seven hundred thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-two were for instruction. So, a lot of the, the funds that we are receiving are aligned to providing support for... So a lot of the, the funds that we are receiving are aligned to providing support for our students. And if we look at the, the FY twenty nineteen by object, which is the salaries, the retirement and fringe benefits, purchase service and others, our salaries is five hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred seventy-two. And if we incorporate our fringe benefits, we have two hundred and fifteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars. For our purchase service, we have one hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-five. And for other services, which could include a pair or other personnel, we have eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-four. If we look at the budget by function and we look at the non-public percentage, which is six percent, the governance is eight percent, student services is a ten percent, and our instruction is seventy-six percent, which is great as we buy different levels of support for our students with the most needs. And if we look at the budget, um, with the salaries, the fringe benefits and the purchase services, as it relates to the percentage of what we spend it on, we have salaries at sixty percent, the retirement and fringe benefits at twenty-two percent, and the purchase service at eighteen percent for the twenty nineteen budget allotment. Are there any questions and any input for the budget?
Yes.
Uh, for the budget, um, do we have approximately eight hundred students in IDA? EA?
Do we?
You would anticipate if one in five students has a learning disability, how many of our four thousand students are in this program?
I can answer that. Um, approximately, um, we have almost fifteen percent of our students who are identified under, with a, um, disability. Um, from last year's numbers, which was approximately thirty-seven hundred students, thirty-seven, roughly thirty-eight hundred students. That was about five hundred and fifty students on IEPs and that does not include students with five oh fours. If we include those students with five oh fours, and again, that is not students with disabilities, we would have approximately over seven hundred students altogether that Student Services works with.
Okay, so you're spending roughly somewhere around a thousand dollars per student in this program.
Or more, yes. Depending on if they have related services.
And I have a second question, if I might. It's not on the budget per se. Uh, but it goes back to the graduation cohort. Now, we didn't meet that and there seemed to be some issues of fluidity of our district, in our district. Um, what could I ask Mr. Seymour? How do we, do we meet the graduation for our non-IDA students? Do they have a similar number for graduation?
Well, I think there are two, there, those are two questions. And the, the other part, with the related services that Mrs. Bray mentions, you may have parents who have students with disabilities that will have more transitions than a, than a regular kid. Because they're trying to find the best service for their child.
Okay, so that's good. I understand that. I, I'm wondering how bad this metric is. That is, if we don't meet the graduation or we have trouble with the graduation on the cohort for the non-IDA, then we wouldn't be expected to meet it for the IDA either. And if they, so that's my question, basically.
And you, uh, I guess the other part, when we were meeting with the Urban Network, uh, other districts have that same concern. So that's probably one of the ones that we'd like to bring to the agenda to the state superintendent. How do we actually ever meet it? Because we don't turn, turn students away with disabilities. Um, we encourage them to come and we give them the best services possible. But in some districts, they kinda tell them in a very interesting way, Wenton Woods would probably meet your needs better than we can. And in some cases, we have actually met their needs better than other districts can. So people want their children to come to places where they're gonna be comfortable and not ostracized. And so when you add the ESL population along with it, we have become the district of destination, not just for kids who excel, but for kids who struggle. That's something I'm proud of.
Yes, sir.
So am I.
And I will tell you, our students with disabilities, the graduation rate did improve from last year to this year. Our target was eighty-five point ten percent or greater. Our result was eighty percent. Um, for the twenty fifteen, sixteen school year, the result was seventy-six point ninety-two percent. And last year, um, and we're in a lag year, by the way. Um, it was eighty percent. So that number continues to increase with students with disabilities who will graduate.
Um, one question, when you showed the, the list of the, um, allocations from year to year, um, is, is that number, the amount that we get, is it contingent upon the number of students we serve? Or, you know, from oh eight to twenty?
I did a little research on that because I kinda thought that question would come. And what I found was that on ODE, they said that it's, they, they're gonna have a formula, but I didn't see a formula on there 'cause I was gonna add that to the information presented. But I couldn't find any allocation, formula or any type of way to specify how we're being identified for these initial amounts. Because what they did have on there is that it's actually, is they're reviewing it now to make adjustments. So the numbers that we have may not be the numbers that we actually get after they've made their adjustments.
If I could help.
Yeah.
Basically, the federal government determines how much they're going to release to the state of Ohio.
And then they make adjustments.
All IEP children across the state are then divided. It's, say there's five thousand and the fifty thousand in the state of Ohio, then the state allocation is divided by that. It doesn't depend upon what their IEP source is, which is supposed to be made up by catastrophic, uh, if, you know, speech versus highly costly students, if that helps.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, understand, because it's federal monies that are allocated. But I guess the state of Ohio determines, it goes through their hands. Um, but do you see the federal government changing? Or what is your, uh, as far as, well, they're gonna change, obviously. I ask these questions, I already know the answers to. But they, um, they, do they have any indication? Because I hear a lot of reports that the Department of Education on a federal level is cutting funding and, and, and I'm not sure where it's funding. Is the fact that it's the, covered by a Disability Act protecting these students' funding? From the feds? If I didn't explain that correctly, I'm sorry, but.
So, Mrs. Coon, it's, it's hard to give a, a, a round number based on the students with disabilities because some of their needs are greater than what the state allows. And you just have to make up the cost. That, that's just the hard sell of it.
No, I understand. I just hope that the federal government still would play their part, whatever that might be. And I was hoping that the, um, the act of the federal disability, just with students with disabilities, helps protect that funding somewhat.
So I'm gonna play a song for you. It's called "The Federal Government Playing Its Part."
That's true.
That is our hope and our desire.
Yes.
Yes, that is, it is protected and that it could, that we would like it to increase. But currently, that's not an option at this time. No, we have to work with what we have.
Right now, we're, okay.
Okay, um, are there any more questions for, um, Mrs. Martin or Mrs. Bray?
I'd just like to thank you for taking care of our people.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. It's my pleasure to serve our students, especially our students with disabilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you for a very thorough presentation. We do appreciate the time and effort that you took to put that together, to help us understand and to help our listening audience understand as well. Um, the next item on our agenda is nine point oh seven, uh, which is the facility update. And most likely, Mr. Denny is going to do this presentation. But Mr. Smith, do you have the floor?
Yes, uh, Mr. Denny's gonna do the presentation. But we've been having some very definitive, uh, conversations in our executive team meeting. And, and I think, uh, I would have to commend the board tonight for hitting a, a grand slam because, uh, with our new conversations, we're saying that if the board doesn't ask you at least fifteen questions, then your presentation is lagging. So, thank you. You guys are way above, way above the board on that one. You ready, Mr. D?
All home runs.
Grand slams.
Yeah, it's grand slams.
Are you ready, Mr. Denny?
Oh, sure.
Thanks, Mr. Smith, again, and good evening, Board. Good evening, everybody. We are, uh, setting up just some, some tech, tech views here. Got Rhonda in her very typical role of helping me out, along with so many other people. Thank you, Rhonda. So, uh, uh, again, just for folks tuning in at home and also anyone it might be in the audience who's interested, um, by way of review, we do have a weekly blitz that provides a communications update on the buildings every week. And it is available, uh, uh, every Monday morning, uh, on our website. So if you just navigate to the lower left, excuse me, lower right-hand corner of our, uh, district webpage, www.wintonwoods.org, you can see construction updates. There's a wealth of information there, um, about the campuses. Uh, but in particular, and, and, and germane to this brief update, uh, you also can see the weekly blitz. Uh, and one of the best pictures, I love that picture. Um, this blitz is exciting, um, because you're starting to see second floor, what they call slab on deck. There's two types of concrete slab. There's slab on grade, which is on the ground, and there's slab on deck. And what you're starting to see now is the second floor. Um, there are stairs actually at the K six now that I got to see last Thursday. Uh, so that's exciting. Uh, they're conducting fireproofing. It's a, it's a very well-designed, uh, building, including comprehensive fireproofing, uh, and, and all kinds of other security enhancements. But, uh, you can see, uh, roofing going on. Based on our last conversation with the CM, I would say we're approaching twenty-five percent complete on the projects, both of them. They're very close to a quarter done. Uh, that's both from a billing and a work completed standpoint, and those things need to match. So we monitor that very closely. Uh, but I'm, again, happy to report, we're still on schedule. We're, we're still within budgets. We're, we're not blowing up contingencies overly much. There are, you always expect expenses, right? You're, because these are giant projects. You're gonna have things that have to be, um, addressed from time to time. But our contingencies are in good shape and we continue to make good progress. So, um, if you haven't been down to the K six, there's actually a small wall in front of the building. It's called the prototype wall and it has all the different types of brick, flashing, uh, window framing, all the different materials you would see on the exterior of the building once it's actually done. They're all in that wall. And the goal is actually to say to the contractors, hey, see that wall? You wanna do that? It's just exactly right. Everything's insulated correctly. Everything's sealed. The flashing's all done. You need to do that around the whole two hundred and forty-five thousand square foot perimeter for the seven twelve or the two hundred and five thousand square foot perimeter for the K six.
Mr. D, how, how are we doing with our, with our neighbors as far as sound and complaints and, and issues?
Very few here. I've gotten one call about dust here. Um, at the K six, again, this site is much more remote to residents than the K six. The K six, they're very close. So we've gotten, maybe in the last couple of months, two phone calls.
Okay.
And one email from the village manager, who I think got a phone call. And we just address it, you know. And, and what, in the one case, we had a, a truck backing up too early. It wasn't supposed to be there at four AM. It was supposed to be there at six.
Yeah, it was.
It was backing up too early.
And I didn't make the phone call.
Mr. Bertie committed test. Uh, so that was just correcting it. You've got, you know, probably two dozen different contractors on the project. You've gotta make sure you keep them all where they need to be. So yes, we've had a, a few complaints, I'd say a handful. But, you know, we wanna be good neighbors, so we wanna make sure we address those things promptly.
So I'm not, I'm not, you know, no, I'll, I'll save that question. That, that's a big question. I'll come back.
But that, that basically concludes the update. Uh, if you get a chance to swing by the K six and can see that, that prototype wall. The one at the seven twelve's not done yet. They're similar. But it's just kind of, uh, uh, neat to see it. You get a real flavor for what the exterior brick is gonna look like. And it's a very nice color. Pretty happy with it.
So years ago, when, when, uh, athletic teams were pulling up for competition and they would see our buildings and they would kinda try to rate us based on what they saw. It's a different look now because you've got this incredible facility coming out of the ground and it just kinda gives, uh, the teachers and the staff a whole different sense of pride about this is, this is the new, the new thing that's coming to enhance our community. So thank for everything that you've done with that.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. Thanks, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Denny, and thank you, Mr. Smith. I always find those very informative, um, those updates. Um, the next item on the agenda, if I can get myself back to where I'm supposed to be, is ten point oh one. And that's under the Superintendent's recommendation for personnel schedules. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. The recommendation is to approve Schedule A, resignations. Schedule B, personal employment, certificated staff. Schedule C, personal employment, support staff. Schedule D, personal employment, certificated and uncertificated staff, including extra duties. And Schedule D continues. And then, uh, finally, there will be Schedule E, leaves, uh, including, uh, FMLA.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order to approve the personnel schedules A, B, C, D, and E.
I'll make a motion to approve schedu, personnel schedules A, B, C, D, and E.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? The only question that I have, Mr. Smith, I see that there are some, um, people on the, uh, schedule here whose, uh, pupil, um, permit expire in twenty twenty. Some of the sports overlap. Is that the reason why that happens? Or can you explain how the, um, the pupil, um, permit certifications work in this case?
Yes, uh, that's a good point, Dr. Johnson, because some, some sports do overlap and some coaches are coaching more than one sport. But Ms. Wilson, can you, uh, give the board and some information of how ODE supports that?
Yes, so all pupil activity permits are issued either for one year, three years, or five years. Um, and they're all backdated to July first and, and they, I'm sorry, the one-year permits are, um, backdated to July first and they expire in June of, of their respective cycle.
So if a sport did overlap, let's say the coach is teaching, coaching football.
It would start in Ju, it would start in July, July first, and it would, and his, his or her pupil activity permit would expire in June of twenty nineteen. Yeah, so it's a whole school year.
Very good. So be, because then it wouldn't stop the coach from mid-year.
Right.
Okay.
So once, so once they have it for the year, we're good.
Okay.
Same thing with the background check.
Okay, that was my only question. Board, uh, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Bertie?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh two, which is the substitute salary schedule. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, uh, Mr. Seymour, Ms. Wilson, and myself, we worked on this substitute, uh, rates for salary schedule. And in order for us to be competitive, there had to be some adjustments. And so the recommendation is to approve the salary schedule for subs effective August first, two thousand nineteen. We kept the sub teacher day rate still at a hundred dollars a day, though.
Very good. Board, a motion would be in order to approve the salary schedule for substitutes effective August the first, twenty nineteen.
I make a motion to approve the salary schedule for substitute effective, substitutes effective August first, twenty nineteen, as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Bertie?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. Thank you. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh three, which is a proposal for overnight extended student trip for the Winton Woods High School Academy of Global Studies ninth grade to travel to Little Rock and Perry, Arkansas, on November the sixth through the ninth, 2019. Superintendent Smith, would you like to add any information regarding this?
Yeah, this is, Dr. Johnson and Board, this has been one of the most progressive, exciting trips. I think the kids come back with so much more information about what it means to understand the struggle of poverty, what it means to understand the struggle of racism in America, and where they fit, and how they can become change agents in that work. One of the things that I'd like to do with the Board's approval is, these ninth-grade students that are coming back this year, I'd like to talk with the ninth-grade facilitator to have them come to a board meeting to give you guys some feedback. What was that experience like, and what did they capture, and what did they leave? So the recommendation is to, this is more information, but the Board does have to approve because it's an out-of-town trip.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal for the overnight extended student trip for the Winton Woods High School Academy of Global Studies, the ninth-grade class, visiting Little Rock and Perryville, Arkansas, November sixth through the ninth, 2019, as presented.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
I'd just like to say that, listening to the purpose of the trip, I've heard this, you know, a couple of years, that it is a good trip. But now that I think about what they did in the middle school on issues of racism, on issues of poverty, on issues of where they fit in the world, this is a great vertical articulation of an experience from learning on paper and experiential learning to being able to go and see it and put it into practice.
Much better prepared because that event that happened in their auditorium where they were asking questions about race and responsibility, these, and that's the progressive work that we're talking about. So these students that are going this year should be more prepared than the students last year.
Right. Well, I was going to compliment that there's some continuity because this started, I guess, 2011. Because graduating, first graders, graduating ninth graders, they were 2015. That was the first class of AGS. And I want to, you know, commend our teachers and our staff for being, having that continuity of, and of an experience year over year over year. And I think that's important, too, that each year get better, too.
That's a good point, Ms. Coon, because there are so many times where students go into an experience and it was great and it was worthwhile, but then we can't do it anymore. And the next group of kids don't get the opportunity. So, yeah.
But it builds on the eighth-grade experience.
Yes.
And culminates through this ninth grade, so.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion on this? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Bertie?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh four, which is the proposal for overnight extended stay trip for the Winton Woods High School band to travel to St. Louis, Missouri, on October the fourth through the, fourth and fifth, 2019. Superintendent Smith?
Well, in this particular proposal, it was pretty interesting because a group of band students had a conversation with me. And they mentioned that they come in the summer, they work very hard, and they think that at some point they should have an overnight experience just to be able to support this incredible football team. At least, that's the way they sold it to me, right? And the other part, they mentioned that Superintendent Smith, next year we'll be in a league. We will not have the opportunity to travel because all of our things are local. So this is our one and done unless we make it to the state. And I thought it was a great, great. I think they sent all their, all their big kids to come and talk to me. And so, as they had me surrounded in the office telling me about the attributes and all the great opportunities that will be in St. Louis, you know, I said, I think it would be a great opportunity. So I would bring it to the Board for your recommendation.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Superintendent Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for overnight extended student trip, Winton Woods High School Academy of Global Study.
Oh, next one.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry. To approve the proposal for overnight extended student trip, high school band of St. Louis, Missouri, October fourth through the fifth, 2019, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions regarding this proposal?
Please note the students are raising their own funds, and this does not come from the general fund.
The other thing that I think has to be noted is that the football team will be going anyway, and there'll be very little support from, you know,
Absolutely.
parents that will travel there. So it's kind of nice that the band is there to support them.
If you guys remember the state opportunity that we had, I think, two years ago, the team was losing, and the band played all night.
Oh, yes, they did.
Band played all night. They just.
And it was raining, and it was cold.
The band, like, we were winning like fifty-two, and they were happy. They were excited, and the band played all night.
And the band played all night. Yes, that's really true. And it's good to have the support. It supports the team as well.
Absolutely.
You know, we do appreciate that. All right, if there are no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Bertie?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh five, which is the list of schools declared impractical to provide transportation. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Board, if you don't have any questions about it, the recommendation is to approve the list of schools declared impractical to provide transportation. If you need more clarification, Mr. Denny is prepared to give you an overview of why we cannot.
Okay, let's get the motion on the floor first, Board, if you could give me that.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of schools declared impractical to provide transportation, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Now, are there any questions regarding that? Or just for clarification, why these are impractical? Does anybody need any other explanation? I think that pretty much is the distance that they have to go and the number of students that are on the bus. And it's just, our buses are all going constantly as it is, so I think pretty much that answers that question. So are there any other questions that Mr. Denny might be able to answer? Yes, Dr. Culetti?
I note in the footnote, it says, however effective August 2012, Winton Woods City Schools no longer provide high school bus service, but it was my impression from conversations that in 2021, we will provide high school bus service?
In 2021, Mr. Denny, along with Ms. Hooper and Ms. Wilson, are working on a study. They're trying to figure out what it would cost us in order to provide transportation. One of the pieces that makes it a little unsettling, if we provide high school busing for our kids, we must provide it for students that are ours that attend another district.
That was my question.
Yes, sir.
And so this can be impacted depending on the outcome of your discussion.
Yes, the, we were waiting until, Dr. Culetti, we were waiting until the new buildings came because that would mean just two places as opposed to seven.
Thank you.
Any other questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Bertie?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously as well. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh six, which is the bus stops for 2019, 2020. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, the recommendation is to approve the bus stops for 2019, 20 school year, as presented.
Okay, Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the bus stops for the 2019, 2020 school year, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
I'd like to bring up one. One of the things that we have to be very aware of, right now, we provide bus services for middle school students, correct? When the schools merge into a seven-twelve experience, it will look strange for us picking a kid up from a stop that's a seventh and eighth grader, but a ninth and tenth grader is not being picked up. Could be the same family on the same block, going to the same place. So we have to kind of really dig in and figure out the strategy behind it and also the financial pieces that will support that work because I think we'll have a lot of concerns from the community if we're picking one child up and not the other, and they're going to the same building.
You got a seventh grader and a tenth grader going to the same building, but you're, yeah, absolutely.
But will there be different start times for the middle school versus the high school?
Yes, it will be. Yes.
Yeah. That will require some investigation.
Well, we've been thinking about it for several years, and I think we'll have a very solid plan when the time comes.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Smith. Are there any other questions regarding the bus stops for 2019, 2020? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Bertie?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh seven, which is the forced view abatement and demolition. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, I'm actually thrilled that the Board saw fit to tour this facility before this conversation came up so that you would understand exactly what you're recommending and the terms and conditions of what the facility looks like. So the recommendation is to award the contract for the abatement and demolition of forced view elementary to complete demolition services in the amount of one-hundred-seventy-one thousand dollars. That's the recommendation.
And that's the low bid from several services. Is that correct?
Mr. Denny?
Well, let's get the motion, and then we'll discuss it. Let's make the motion.
Go on up.
Yeah, you can come up, Mr. Denny.
I'll make the motion to award the contract for the abatement and demolition of forced view elementary to complete demolition services in the amount of one-hundred-seventy-one thousand dollars.
I'll second.
All right, we got.
Who do we want to give that to? Mrs. Coon?
Yeah, you can. It doesn't matter.
Okay, I'm to Mrs. Rugliss. Okay. It has been motioned and seconded. Now, we have some questions for discussion. Dr. Culetti?
So, as I see it, that's a low bid from ten bids. The only question I have, that's one-hundred-seventy-one thousand, and then under environmental demolition group, there's a fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred bid. What is that for?
That's abatement only.
Abatement.
So the, there were eleven bids, which we were thrilled to have. That's the most I've seen ever.
Because people like tearing things down.
So the bid was structured as a, and this was to encourage participation, so I think it worked. You can do a demolition-only bid. You can do an abatement-only bid. Or you can do a combination of abatement and demolition together and do what's called a wet demo with a specialized disposal. And so the one-hundred-seventy-one thousand by complete demolition services was the low bid on a combo. What you're seeing from EDG, which is a good firm, but that was abatement only. So if you join that with, I believe it's O'Rourke, they end up in third place because O'Rourke proposed demolition only. So we actually looked not only at each combo, but also permutations of the onlies, if you will, the abatement only versus, and in combination with the demolition only.
I'd also note that some of the bids are as high as seven hundred, six hundred thousand dollars.
Seven hundred and twenty-six.
Seven hundred, so.
Noted, and our architect commented on that, that the last seven or eight demolition projects they've done have been all over the map, and no one's sure why.
And so that demolition would include, you said, the demolition, abatement, cleaning up any hazardous, potentially hazardous?
Absolutely. In fact, that has to happen before the actual demolition can occur. So the notice to proceed, provided this is approved this evening, we anticipate the notice to proceed on or about September twelfth or eleventh. Abatement, we hope, will be completed by October second, and we hope the demolition will be done by December eleventh. Those are the dates lined up in the specs for the bid. If it can be done quicker, then we'll definitely push for that.
Yeah, and you look at the sensitivity of this abatement piece, I'm sure that the homeowners close by really appreciate, you know, our attention to details. I mean, we want
Yes.
this thing to go as safely as possible without any aftershock.
Yes, sir.
And was part of the process, I mean, SAP, SHP, Skanska Megan, I mean, have they done work with this company before? Do you know?
I know that they interviewed, I don't know that, Mr. Bertie. That's a good question. Most of the firms on there, they had. There were a few that they had not. And I know they brought the firm in, and they interviewed them, and they also called references for this particular company.
Diligence, it's just that, that spread, in lowest to highest,
Right.
is huge, and just making sure that everything gets done the way we expected to get done.
The second-place company was one-eighty-five, and they had done business with that particular firm. So they, yeah, they were low, but they weren't ridiculous, so.
And what was the highest bid again?
I want to say three forty-six or something like that. Someone can correct me. Oh, I've got the bid tab. It was well over three hundred thousand.
Seven hundred and twenty-six thousand.
I mean, just for that piece.
Three sixty-two for this.
It was three twenty.
Our comment is that we talked about possibly doing some sort of like swing-through video of the place before we, I mean, just because people might say, well, you're just tearing down these buildings, and they really aren't good enough to, because on the outside, it's all brick, you know?
Right.
And, you know, there's a lot of broken windows. But I think just, just so that there's something to document that these really need to come down and that they're not safe to even try. You would spend more money trying to, you know, bring it back up to any type of standard or code. So, I mean, just to make sure that that gets done.
It's a wonderful idea. Mr. Smith and I have discussed that.
Yeah, I think the other thing, and I think the Board's had a conversation about it, and Mr. Denny has given an overview. The buildings are worth more down than they are standing because no one can use the land that's around it.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Right.
And it's also a hazard. You get a small kid in there, and they get hurt.
Right.
There are a lot of areas where, you know, I think we have to do our diligence to make sure that it's not a hazard for children. But I do have another question. So this demolition, does that take care of all that stuff that was in there?
The contents?
So there's a public auction coming. Thank you for the, if I could, a brief public announcement. We will be putting an ad in the paper as well. But there is a public auction coming because that's what the Board's policy requires. So we're going to endeavor to sell everything that's in there. What doesn't sell, we will either relocate to another facility or if it's completely not useful at all, which a great percentage of it is what's left from years of consolidation, you know. It'll be demolished with the building. And we'll negotiate that with the company. I'm sorry?
So the checks mix is going to go up for auction, too?
Well said. Yes.
You get the point. There's a lot of stuff in there.
Yes, absolutely. Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Denny. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us about that?
Just one high point on this. I don't know, when this ad went in the paper, this was a three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar estimate, and it came in at one-seventy-one. So that's money that we will try to repurpose later to put into these buildings.
Bravo.
So it's a really good thing to see.
And one other thing with the district, we'll save money by not having this facility as well.
Yes, over forty thousand dollars a year, by my analysis. I think it's, I suspect it's actually more. That's what I can prove with hard data that I have at my fingertips.
That's pretty good. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith and Mr. Denny. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Bertie?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. Thank you. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda. Yes, we're all clear. Next item on our agenda is eleven point oh one, the legislative report. The Board of Education reports. Mrs. Coon, as our legislative liaison, you have the floor.
I don't have a report tonight, but I will invite any comments. I don't have a report tonight, but I invite any comments from the superintendent or any of my colleagues. I'll have another report next month.
The only, the only thing that may be coming in our, in our path is the CBD oil that people are now wanting to be able to bring it on campus, and the, we will have to create a policy, Ms. Wilson's working on a policy now, that the answer will be no. You, you cannot. And there's another one where we must create a, a bullying, it's not a, it's a bully, it's an anti-bullying program, it's required. We're working on that one as well. There are some major pieces that are coming out, but I think, Ms. Coon, you hit, you hit it last month when you talked about the separation of the ABD, the ADB, Academic Distress Commission, where they are, it's a mortuaryum right now. We, we were not in it, we were not close to being in it, so I'm happy, but for the districts that are in it, they can't get out, and for new districts, you can't go in. So, those are some of the major factors. But look forward to hearing more about the, the AB, the CBD oil that's coming, you know, to a school near you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Coon. The next item is 11.02, which is the Great Oaks Career Technical Center report. Mr. Birdy, you have the floor.
For the Great Oaks, they just went back to school the week of August 14th, so they did not have students in the spotlight report. They had a picnic before the regular board meeting, where one of the board members brought corn from his farm and homemade ice cream. It was a great time.
Okay.
I'm really happy I'm on the Great Oaks School Board when there's days like that.
Well, we get split P suit.
Yes, we did get split P suit from Dr. Coupalletti, it was very good. And I really don't have anything else to report at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is 12.01, which is board motions, recommendations, and I don't think that we have any, if, I don't think so, that we have any board motions or recommendations. Is there anything that you all can think of that we should be discussing at this time? I didn't have anything, so, all right, the next item, moving on, the next item on the agenda is 13.01, comments from the members of the Board of Education and Superintendent, and we could start with you, Mr. Birdy.
No, just thank you, Dr. Reigland and Ms. Roselle, for the, for the idea of all the summer program information that you gave us, Ms. Bray, Ms. Martin, for, for that, Ms. Roselle. Just good to have that out there and help us understand what's going on and how things have, have worked or not worked, as far as funding is, is concerned. Mr. Smith, state of the schools address coming up, please feel free to, everybody should try to attend that if possible, and with that, I will turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Coupalletti?
No, I also give my thanks to Dr. Reigland, Ms. Roselle, and also to Mr. Denny for moving forward so rapidly with the Forest View abatement, and, no, seriously, it is, it is a liability.
It is, it's scary.
And, and also for getting that low bid, that's great, so, and good luck to everybody in the coming school year. I really appreciate what I see everyone doing all the time, and it's really amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coupalletti. Mrs. Ruggles?
Just continuing on to try and build partnerships to help support our students, as Mr. Smith just mentioned, the bullying, and I, you know, there's an opportunity to partner with Mercy Health and their mental health department, as well as, I know that Mercy, Dr. Wilson is doing, providing some services for students who have ADHD, and doing some parent trainings, they get, I know they get a binder, one of my neighbor's kids went to the training to help learn strategy, so, you know, being able to partner with them will be a great opportunity, and Mr. Smith and I have been doing some work on trying to help local schools develop some prevention, preventive measures as it relates to drug use, and we have an upcoming meeting with Commissioner Drehouse and some local superintendents to dress, to address this issue. And lastly, there's a huge college fair, I forget the name of it, but it's coming up in October, so I wanna tell parents to make sure that they're paying attention to it. It's usually held at the Duke Energy Center, I believe it's October 4th, but I'll make sure I have more information next time, so, but put it on your radar, so, welcome back, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruggles. Mrs. Coon?
I, I too wanted to welcome back our students, our families, the staff, our coaches, all, all the pieces that make for a good school year to get off to a good start. I'm very excited about the upcoming year. I'm excited to see about all the opportunities for our students to travel and to have different experiences. I think that's what we're here for. You can find we're a very inquisitive group of school board members, who are very hungry for information on how we can better benefit our students. We do appreciate the information that you give, we welcome it, so we're, we're very hungry students that wanna learn about ways we can help make your jobs easier, and ways that we can fulfill the potential of all of our students. We appreciate giving us that option. So, with that, I appreciate everyone's time and attention.
Thank you, Mrs. Coon. Mr. Seymour?
No, thank you.
All right, Mr. Smith?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, again, say thank you again to all of our community, people who volunteer and pour into our school district, and I started school back today, and I was like a kid last night, I could not sleep. I mean, I was up like every hour, like, "I need to sleep so that I can work tomorrow." But that's the butterflies you get when you teach. Anybody that teaches knows exactly what I'm talking about, and when you lose those butterflies, it's probably time to stop, just gonna retire, you know? But-
What if you just lose a wing?
Yeah, you don't lose any of it. Don't lose any of it.
Is that all right?
Yeah, I couldn't sleep, like, every hour, I was up like, "Gosh, I gotta get back to sleep, it's only 1:00, okay, get back to sleep." But anyway, I, I was really excited to get my school year started, and I know that we, like Mr. Smith said, this school's only been in for a couple of days or a couple of weeks, but it seems like longer once you kinda get back into the, the swing of everything, but we do appreciate everything that you do for our district. Also, as Mr. Smith has said earlier, please pay attention to our calendar, we, the gun, you know, and then we're just, it's, we're off, you know, it's, it's off to the races, so, there's a lot going on, and that elementary school reading guarantee, we heard so much about that third grade, we really need to invest some time in that, and if we have some people out there that want to volunteer to come in and help those students read and, and whatever, we welcome that. Mrs. Denny, our community engagement person, has that whole thing set up so that you can volunteer, you can go online and volunteer, so we really want to encourage people who want to give back to the community in some way, to volunteer to help our students, because we don't want anyone to be left behind, and we don't want them to feel like each grade gets a little bit harder because they're struggling with each, with, with each round that goes higher. So, there's a lot of open houses planned, there's just so much going on at the beginning of the school year. Parents, guardians, get out, meet your teachers, do what you can to help your students be a success. And again, thanking the high school for the senior credit check. We don't have a problem, we don't have the problem that we used to have, you know, so that's really a great thing. So, with that being said, board, I believe there is a need for an executive session, so I will entertain a motion at this time for the executive session.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and court action.
Second?
It's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Ruggles?